Thank you, Commissioner Ballard. All right, reports of the commissioners, any reports?
Please call for a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kathy, please call for a vote.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatters?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Abstain.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Abstain.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Sheriff Finch?
Abstain.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Reports.
I had one thing I wanted to mention. Economic Alliance in Homage County had a really great conversation that they presented to the community titled "Homelessness is a Housing Problem." And it was an evidence-based discussion, lot of good information. It's available on their Facebook page or their YouTube channel. It's not too long, it's under an hour. I would highly recommend that anybody take a listen to that, it's good information.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Chatters. Okay, item four, staff comments.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Yorick Stevens-Watch, Planning Director for the City of Everett. Good to be here this evening, glad to see you again after a little bit of break over the summer. Been hard at work in the Planning Department over that summer, advancing the Comprehensive Plan, advancing some of the code amendments that you've worked on, advancing the Housing Action Plan, and managing the consistent flow of permits and land use developments within the city. So we've had a busy but enjoyable summer, and I hope that you all have it as well. The two ordinances that we last left, we last, you last left us with, I guess, with the recommendation, we had proposals on homeless shelters, transitional housing, temporary extreme weather shelters, that the Planning Commission voted a recommendation of approval to the City Council. And then the second proposal was around removing the maximum number of residents who can live in a dwelling unit. Both of those ordinances went through the City Council process and were passed by the Council a couple of weeks ago. I think it took about four or five meetings. The Council really rolled their sleeves up on the ordinances, appreciated the work that you did, had some really good conversations around everything, especially in the shelters ordinance around social services and the role that those can play, both associated with a shelter facility and standalone. I've passed out to you a list of changes from the recommendation, from the ordinance that was recommended and passed out of this body. A lot of them were technical corrections or clarifications or something that staff noticed as we were working through the ordinance. There was one kind of a policy-level amendment that was advanced by the Council. Some of those changes were generated by questions from the Council. There was one that specified that the Council was interested in adding a clarification that if a social service use was to be co-located with a shelter, that it needed to go through its own approval process. And if that social services was going to be offered to a population beyond who was the residents of the facility itself. So, put another way, if you were to cite a new shelter and there were services associated with it, whether that be counseling, behavioral health, medical services, or whatnot, that the assumption is that those services were provided for the residents of the facility alone. And if those services were to be provided to a broader population, that that would have to go through its own approval process administratively. I think that was in response to, there are a couple of different shelter projects and services that are being discussed in the community. And there was one in particular that generated some discussion around the hotel on Everett Mallway, I think. So there were some Council members who wanted to make sure that if there were services provided with there, that there was some clear understanding of what the population was going to be to those. Other than that, you can see the full list of changes that were made, and the two ordinances were passed. And I believe the code, amended code became effective on the 5th tomorrow, becomes effective tomorrow. So the next code amendments that we're going to be working on, on the staff level, are accessory dwelling units. You heard a presentation on that back in March. We went through kind of the policy basis for accessory dwelling units. It's one of the actions in the Housing Action Plan to revise the regulations to permit additional dwelling, accessory dwelling units within the city. We talked about some potential code amendments, and we've been working hard over the summer, particularly since we finished with the shelters and max residence ordinances, on fleshing out the details of those proposed code amendments. And we expect to bring those to you at your next meeting in two weeks' time on the 18th. So prepare to roll those sleeves up again and get into the nitty-gritty of setbacks, heights, heights within setbacks, relationship between primary and accessory units, design standards, and everything. It is good practice for the much bigger job that awaits us not too far down the line, which is associated with the Comprehensive Plan periodic update, some of the middle housing work program, and I'll touch on a little bit of that in the second agenda item we have today. I think that's it for updates. We're happy to have Bob Benford and a whole team that's working on the Baker Heights redevelopment into a Park District development. We'll be excited to hear about that. And then we'll finish up with the Comprehensive Plan update update. Happy to take any questions on whatever there may be.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes, just a clarification on the handout that you gave us, Yorick. At the top, it says, "Deleted text is highlighted in red and added text in green." But when I look at that first paragraph, it looks like it's all added text. There's some red and some green, and it looks like it's all added, to me. Or modified, added or modified.
I will have to take a look at that. It looked right last time I was at it. Oh, yeah, the very first one, so for each one of those, there are three cells. There's the original, revised, and why. And so for that first one that made some changes about the managing agency, there were some questions around warrant checks. Actually, that was one of the early questions that came out. What kind of warrants are we looking for, and what would justify removal or immediate contact to the Everett Police Department? So everything that was, that's red there was removed, and then just below it, everything that was green was replaced.
Oh, I see.
So it was a nearly wholesale rewrite of that section there. Only those couple of words that are black are unchanged. For those who are listening online, we'll put a copy of this on the Planning Commission webpage, as well as the other two handouts that I'll speak to later, and these were part of the Council record as well.
Thank you, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Yorick. Next, we have open public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Kathy, is there anybody on the phone? Okay, great. Next up is the Everett Housing Authority Park District Development.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss with you tonight our vision and plan for the Park District, the former Baker Heights site.
My name is Ashley Lomis Johnson. I'm the Executive Director of the Everett Housing Authority, and next month I will have been in this position for 10 years. Before our consultants make their presentation, I have a few introductory comments to make. First and foremost, whatever we do at the Everett Housing Authority stems from our mission, and I want to give credit to one of our most influential and impactful board members in our agency's history. Benjamin Young, our Board Chair, who will be leaving the state tomorrow, I believe, was the primary driver in reshaping our mission to not only include housing, but also to define it as creating communities characterized by racial equity that provide all families the skills, all families the opportunity to survive. To Ben, our mission is not to help people to learn the skills to survive. His vision for the former Baker Heights site and elsewhere is to build vibrant mixed-income communities where people learn the skills to thrive. The former Baker Heights site is one of the most significant and impactful opportunities we have in the City of Everett to recreate a neighborhood by leveraging its significant underutilized potential. The second slide shows the location of the former Baker Heights and the new Park District. It highlights some of the significant resources and institutions in the Delta neighborhood. What it does not show are the magnificent views of Mount Baker, the Cascades, the Olympics, and Mount Rainier. These are the views that the future residents of the Park District will enjoy. The plan we are developing is designed to create a new mixed-income development. It leverages the rich potential of this location by adding high-quality mixed-income housing amenities and services needed to make this a thriving and more vibrant community. This month, 80 years ago, the Everett Housing Authority was created. A year later, Baker Heights was built. Over time, the vast majority of Everett's subsidized housing was concentrated in the Delta neighborhood. During the past 10 years, we have invested over $100 million to enhance our assets and improve this neighborhood, and that includes the current development of 105 units there. During the past, so 80 years from today, people will look back and see a community where families have thrived and where the history of racial inequity in housing has forever been erased.
Thank you, Ashley.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners. My name's Bob Benford, I'm a partner with Makers Architecture. We are one of several consultants on EHE's team here. We're leading the entitlements aspect of the project, which is why I'm here talking to you. In fact, I want to start off with this slide on why, why we're here, talking to you about this project. And a big part of it is the, this site is zoned UR3, which doesn't allow the flexibility to meet the goals that Ashley was talking about and EHA desires for the site. So the existing zoning allows for somewhere between 700 to 800 dwelling units on this property. The goal is basically double that, up to about 1,500 dwelling units. And ultimately, a planned development overlay will be required to allow the flexibility to meet this goal. And that allows for modifications, including increasing the building height, allowing for a wider variety of uses, most particularly neighborhood commercial uses and some civic uses, to provide amenities for the site. And there may be some other adjustments, like to off-street parking requirements and some other minor standards. So the PDO, it requires Council approval, so it also requires your review and your recommendation to Council. So we've been talking with Yorick and Jennifer and staff, and we understood that you were interested in talking to us, and we probably wanted to come and talk to you, to tell you about our progress, regardless of that. But the approval of a planned development overlay is contingent on the public benefits really being commensurate with the level of flexibility with the zoning through this, through this process. So a little more about the current UR3 zone. The height limits are 50 feet or four stories, but it's actually lower, about 28 feet, where along the edges next to single-family zones, which we've highlighted in red on the map there, on the, on the left and right. There's no density limit, so that's not an issue, and no commercial or civic uses are allowed. So that's just kind of the highlights of the district there. So as far as the, EHA undertook a master planning process over the last couple of years here with the architecture firm, GGLO, leading it. And as part of that process, EHA understood the importance of collaborating with the community, that that was going to be critical to the success of the project, both designing it and obviously ultimately having approval. So during that process, even though the process was held largely during the pandemic, they held three iterative design-focused meetings in 2021 with surveys, a participatory game, and a separate meeting with local EHA residents to obtain feedback on the master plan and various ideas that were going into it. So ultimately, they had about 100 community members participating in the project. And the outcome, in the green there are some of the taglines that came out of that. So safe, beautiful, welcoming, sustainable, walkable, and connected. And the objectives are good open space in parks, community services, public safety, community building and equity, affordable housing, as well as carbon reduction and sustainability. And I'll walk through some of the examples of it. But first, Scott here on our team was able to get up, drone over the district to provide some good shots. And as Ashley indicated, yes, there are some great views, especially when you go up a couple of, a couple of levels there. But the site's about 16 acres, including the streets within it. And there is about a 40-foot grade difference between the east end, which is on the left here, because we're looking to the south-southwest, about 40 feet from there to the western edge, just off of Poplar, on the right of your screen there. And so those, that grade provides both some challenges, but naturally some, some great opportunities for the design of the site. Otherwise, as Ashley indicated, there's lots of amenities around the site. And it's also, you could see several of EHA's housing are adjacent to it, including Madrona Square, which I'll have a slide on in a second. There's also, you have a large wetlands immediately to the west of the site there, as well as Hawthorne Elementary, the Boys and Girls Club. There's Safeway in the Broadway corridor, which is about a quarter of a mile to the west. And there you could also see the Providence Regional Medical Center. And also, just not on this, but there's the College and the Washington State Extension just to the north out of the picture. And then, of course, you could see downtown Everett and Everett Station to the, to the south. So Madrona Square, if you've been by there, is, is under construction, so you can see the vision graphic to the left and, and a shot from about a month ago of the construction progress. That is planned to open early next year with 105 units, and applications given to priority families experiencing homelessness. Essentially, this will function as the first phase of what EHA is calling the Park District. So I'm sure many or all of you were involved in the rethink housing, Everett's Housing Action Plan, and the Housing Needs Assessment, which really emphasized the challenge that the city and frankly, the whole region is under right now with housing. So the Housing Needs Assessment here in 2019 estimated that 23,000 additional dwelling units would be needed within the City of Everett by 2035. And some of the tenants noted in those, in that effort was trying to provide an increased variety of housing types, focusing the development on urban corridors, promoting transit-oriented communities, providing for affordability options, and to reduce displacement. And also mentioned that there's, there's many policies in the existing Comprehensive Plan calling for walkable, mixed-use, transit-oriented neighborhoods and developments. And one of the policies up here says, coordinate with EHA to increase the supply of housing for low-income and special-needs populations, for, for instance. So the, the map, the site plan on the right here is the outcome of the master planning process, which ended at the beginning of this year, and again, was led by GGLO. And it included approximately 1,500 units of mixed-income housing, including a large senior housing component, ownership opportunities being an important aspect, and, and supportive housing. Some of the other points are, again, bringing desired services to the Delta neighborhood, ideally such as a grocery store, restaurants, and other retail to serve this, the Delta neighborhood and this development. Civic uses like a preschool and a library, place-making, design in a park-like setting in a walkable, transit-oriented neighborhood, open space, a variety of open spaces that go well beyond code requirements, and large-scale sustainable systems such as innovative wood structural designs of some of the taller buildings. So transit, you could see that Route 29 goes through the district down, down Poplar Street, and then 15th to the south, heading to Marine View Drive, and Marine View Drive holds Route 4. You've got Route 7 over on Broadway, quarter-mile to the west. And then also Broadway's plan for the gold BRT line starting in 2027. And, and all of those aspects may allow for some reductions in the required amounts of parking and make that more palatable. And I believe Yorick was gonna, we've been collaborating with Yorick here.
Yeah, so I'll speak a little bit to the entitlements process and what entitlements are, are the land use decisions and permits that are necessary to authorize the construction of the development that Bob has walked you through here. So there are two major pieces to this entitlement process that we're looking at, and that's the planned development overlay and the development agreement. The planned development overlay recognizes that, as Bob mentioned, there are some aspects of the development that, that we're seeking that are not authorized under the existing zoning code. The planned development overlay is a way to look at a large-scale development like this and consider it as a whole and recognize that it's kind of a special thing. And so there are some, some good reasons to depart from aspects of the code and to basically design a special sub-area within the city that has its special rules that we work on according to this timeline here. Some examples of just this kind of a thing are to our right and to our left, Waterfront Place and Riverfront. Those are great examples of big master planned comprehensive developments that went through a planned development overlay process and then had a development agreement. The planned development overlay is going to come to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. It's a review process five. I provided you a handout with some of the relevant sections of code for you to peruse in whenever you're ready to hit, hit the, hit bed and fall asleep. The criteria that we have collectively between staff and the Planning Commission and the City Council, who's ultimately going to make the decision for approving these departures from the existing zoning code, I'll go ahead and list, list them. They include the quality of the proposed development and its compatibility with surrounding properties, and specifically, we'll be looking at landscaping and buffering of buildings, public safety, site access, circulation, and parking, light and shadow impacts, signs, nuisance irritants, noise, smoke, dust, and whatnot, and the architectural design of the buildings, unique characteristics of the property and the proposed uses, the arrangement of the buildings and open spaces, visual impact of the development, public improvements proposed in connection with the development, preservation of unique natural features of the property, and then the overall public benefit derived by allowing the proposed alteration of development standards. And I think Bob has touched on a couple of those. Those are the criteria that we are to be reviewing the proposal when we flesh out some of the details in the early part of the schedule here. And then using this process, we can change many aspects of the development regulations, including setbacks, heights, parking, landscaping, signs, special regulations. And then design and development standards contained in this title, which might capture everything else that's not on that list, and then the residential density. So I expect this, this process to start with some, some kind of negotiations and discussions with the project team over with, with the Planning Department and our colleagues in, in Public Works and Public Safety and all of the other departments in the city. And we'll get to where we feel like we have a solid recommendation for what would make a good development, protect the neighborhood's interests, the city's interests, and take good advantage of what I think is a kind of a generational opportunity to, to create a vibrant and mixed-income neighborhood within a vibrant and mixed-income Delta neighborhood. The other aspect, other than the planned development overlay, is the development agreement. And the development agreement provides certainty to both the city and the, and the applicant, the Housing Authority and the development team in this case, over the life of what is likely going to be a phased project. So the development agreement would go hand-in-hand with the planned development overlay and essentially set the overall structure for the entire development, including the phasing, including mitigation and fees. So we may get to a different place in terms of impact fees, SEPA, State Environmental Policy Act-related mitigation for any adverse impacts that might be found through the environmental review process, permit fees, and all of that. So there's kind of a, more of a blank slate available with this development than your traditional development that just follows standard impact fees, mitigation, and, and consistency with the development regulations as they exist. So we'll, we'll work closely with the project team. I note that this is pretty close to our timeline for the Comprehensive Plan periodic update, so we'll be juggling both projects and making sure to incorporate, stepwise, as this project advances, we'll need to include that in our review and our analysis of the Comprehensive Plan periodic update. This is a sizable enough development that it does kind of have citywide impacts, and we'll make sure that that's addressed in the right place. Environmental impact statement, we have a staff role in accepting the analysis and ensuring that it properly analyzes and discloses the potential adverse impacts and also tells the story of the development. It's a great opportunity to tell both the positive side and the challenges. And then we'll be looking for a street vacation that has its, which is the relinquishment of the right-of-way within that development, which has its own set of criteria and is also a City Council decision.
Thank you, Yorick. And we show a fairly ambitious timeline there at the bottom. Really, our goal is to do, do our homework now, do our collaboration, and I'll talk a little bit in a minute about community engagement to make sure that we put together a, a really good plan upfront, so it doesn't, so smooth the adoption process and, and just making sure we have a really good plan that the community supports right upfront. So we're hoping, at least here, to try to get an application submitted around April, May in 2023, next year, and then go through that process with your review and Council approval, at least for the PDO portion of it. So, and I mentioned that we were part of a larger team, and I think just this, this list of multidisciplinary, good consultant teams tells you how serious Everett Housing Authority is about this project and, and moving forward. And so this list includes a number of architects, landscape architects, engineers, planners, real estate specialists, and communication specialists. And lastly, here, I just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about what we're doing, what we've been doing, and what we're doing now. We have been reviewing the master planning documents, and we're in the process of refining the site plan, design concepts, and also developing the program. We'll be developing the program for housing, open space, civic uses, commercial, in more detail over the next several months. detail over the next several months. And EHA has, has been actively looking and talking with potential partners, including the Snow Out Co-op, KS ER Public Radio, the Everett Public Library, Bezos Academy, and Early Childhood Education and Assistance Program, to try to, to have those partners and amenities in the district, along with some of those restaurants and grocery store and amenity uses. So regarding community engagement, what we're trying to do with this is to reengage with the community and stakeholder audiences, to share some of the progress and some of the current, current design approaches, and ultimately ensure that the neighbors and stakeholders, that they feel informed and up to date as our project progresses through the stages. And we're prepared to use diverse methods of outreach to ensure equitable participation and really to help drive the refinements of this plan to meet community objectives. And again, to make sure that the benefits are commensurate with the flexibility that we are providing. So EHA has, is just in ongoing conversations continuously with, with the community. And, and some key areas that we'll want to focus on with the community are, again, the density and the public benefits. And as far as some of the methods for engagement, we'll, we'll be having more stakeholder meetings, informational community presentations, we're looking at probably like January and February in particular, perhaps facilitated breakout groups for brainstorming, feedback, and other methods. Surveys could be one option. And again, maintaining direct contact with civic partners, including the Delta Neighborhood And we've just leaving our project contacts here on the screen, but that's, that's our, that's our overview, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and City Council and staff and, and the community on the project.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Very informative. Any questions by commissioners?
Yes, I'm curious what kind of flexibility the Housing Authority has in terms of income mixing on its properties. In other words, you know, the, the image of public housing is that it's focused on low, low-income households. And you, the mention has been made in your presentation and in the materials about mixed income. So I was just wondering if you could explain to us how, how much mixing you are able to do as a housing authority?
We are a creature of the state. We're a creature of the state and under state law, we are permitted to have up to fifty percent of our assets be for housing above the area median, or eighty percent of the area median income. So that doesn't mean within a property that the limit is fifty, it's just as, you know, all of our assets, all of our housing assets, there's that fifty percent. But within a, in a development, it's not limited. As a federally funded agency, you know, the federal housing policy has moved away from concentration of extreme poverty in these developments and have moved towards more mixed-income developments and opportunities for people to live.
Thank you very much.
Don't sit down yet. So with respect to the number of housing units that will be owner-occupied, do you have a target percentage there for, for that?
We do not.
You do not?
Similar question. Do you have a spread of the, of the mixed incomes? I mean, is there a perfect scenario, or is there something you're kind of looking for is, for that mix?
We have always communicated. Hi, I'm Jason Morrow, I'm the Director of Development for the Housing Authority.
Does this work?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jason Morrow. I'm the Director of Development for the Housing Authority. To answer that question directly, we've always communicated to the public that we would position subsidized housing in such a way that we would replace the existing public housing with subsidized housing, which is roughly a two-hundred-and-forty-four unit count. Hundred-and-five of those counts are currently being constructed, and will finish construction in early Q1 of next year, the remainder of which will be part of the replacement units for the Park District as a whole, so part of roughly one-hundred-and-thirty-nine, one-hundred-and-forty units of this fifteen-hundred unit count. Doesn't mean that we are necessarily hitting those numbers specifically, but we have communicated that we will replace those units. We've also received a lot of public commentary that we're highly supportive of more mixed-income, less subsidized housing, and so we're trying to meet the mix of meeting the, our commitments to, to the residents and the citizens of Everett to provide affordable subsidized housing while at the same time being fully committed to kind of decentralization of poverty in Delta. So hopefully that answers your question.
When could we expect to get that kind of data to, you know, in terms of percentages and units that will become available?
The quick answer is no time soon. We won't be committing to particular data numbers anytime soon. We have roughly, you know, per our schedule and timeline, we have roughly a two-year process just to get to rezone. From that point forward, we'll start working on an individual phase-by-phase process in which each individual with phase will be determined on its own. And so we'll be doing that over a ten-year period.
So Phase One is under construction now. Can you give us a picture of, of what Phase One will end up looking like in terms of how many units will be owner-occupied and what the, what the, the spread is for income, median income?
When we speak of the Park District, we, we tend to separate that from the existing project that's under construction, which we're calling Madrona Square.
Okay.
That particular project, though, will be part of the overall fabric. So in one, in one way, it is contextually the first phase. That particular project, sixty-seven of those units are directly targeted for children and families in homelessness within the Everett School District. And so sixty-seven out of those hundred-and-five units will occupy that particular purpose for that particular target demographic. The remainder of those units will fulfill basically requirements to house folks at basically fifty and sixty percent AMI per our tax credit investment structure.
Okay, and none are owner-occupied?
None are owner-occupied.
I guess I kind of have a few questions if I can. And I got to admit, it might sound a little petty. The, the name Park District is a little distracting to me, and I, I just want to verify, we're not talking about a governmental, like what normal people would think of as a park district. This is just your Everett Housing, Everett Housing Association's name for this project. Is that, am I, am I clear on that?
You are clear.
Okay. I think that's a little confusing. I guess I'll just leave it at that. I, I guess the question, at the old Baker Heights, what was, how many housing units were, were there?
Roughly two-hundred-and-forty-four.
Okay, so we're, in this project, talking significantly increasing up to fifteen-hundred. I have seen a couple of things come across during my time here on the, on the Planning Commission. There's, I've seen on a couple of occasions quite a bit of community hostility toward certain projects like this. Is there, what, is there something about this project, particularly, you just talked about the housing of Everett School District families with, in homelessness. It sounds like that project is getting, is underway, and it's not meeting with any hostility from the community or, you know, I guess backlash about that. Is there something about this project that hopefully would not have that type of, I mean, or, or have you done enough outreach to know for sure if there's going to be some sort of community pushback about citing something like this at this location? Or because of the historical, historically, it's been with Baker Heights previously, is it not expected that there'll be quite as much maybe community opposition?
Having done development for a long time, my experience is there's always different perspectives and opinions in the population, and there will be, you know, heightened conversation about particular elements of the plan. I think we do kind of anticipate to have that conversation. I think we feel that we have already put out significant amount of outreach. We spent a year in consultation with the community and kind of other civic stakeholders in conversation to get through the first stage of the master plan, which we showed there. That included a wide range of consultation, and we heard a wide range of voices. In particular, the largesse and, and, and the most heightened topic of conversation tended to be around height and density as general concepts. And, you know, I suppose we would point out that much of these conversations and the degree to which you consider opposition to them generally have a contextual element. And when you place a variety of contexts placed against each other, you tend to get different reactions to those particular contexts. And I would say if you, if you think of it in that kind of contextual sense, there generally is pretty favorable response, and all of our surveys and community engagement showed very positive response to the Park District and the public amenities and the public benefits that it would be providing in exchange for some of the variances and other flexibility we suggested. At the same time, we know there's a continuing conversation around height, density, and the trade-offs between height and density for affordable housing, for the supply of housing in general in Everett, for the use of very valuable large-scale properties which don't exist in wide amounts in Everett, and also for the contextual elements within the Park District itself. Once you start walking into kind of the architectural and urban planning elements, it's a lot easier to understand some of the contextualization of some of the scale, some of the placement of the height in ways that we would like to think are sensitive to some of the complaints which you'd be referencing. And so we think overall that, given the context of the need in terms of housing, in terms of affordable housing, in terms of civic amenities and services in the Park District, the general deprivation of some of those services in Delta for a very long period of time, which has been a continuing source of conversation from residents and community, we think that ultimately the outcome will be positive and the conversation will be positive.
If I can have one other question?
Yeah.
I'll finish up here. Sorry to take so much time. With regard to the mixed-use kind of element, I understand there's housing, fifteen-hundred units of housing, but there's also discussion, I guess, retail and maybe some other amenities. I guess, I guess I'd be concerned, is there, is, how much, what is the market for, are there any examples of this type of thing in this setting with, like, the Housing Authority or as kind of a, hate to say, it's from lower-income housing or subsidized housing development like this? Are there other examples where they've integrated commercial activities, like retail space, restaurant space, that sort of thing, in this context? Similar, like, with going down the Riverside, I understand, but that's not necessarily a public benefit-type development. Does my question make sense?
It makes perfect sense. I don't want, I, I don't suppose that I would be fully equipped to kind of speak to the largesse of what housing authorities across the country are doing in this context. You know, regionally, I think there's some examples in the past. I think you're seeing in Seattle and you're seeing Tacoma, a strong movement that would, would more replicate kind of a mixed-income kind of market-type approach, where you have a certain amount of the parcels that are being developed by market-rate developers with sort of retail civic elements at kind of the base of large-scale podium kind of high-rise product. So I think more and more, as we look out in the future and we see more aggressive movement by housing authorities to provide solutions for housing shortages and affordability shortages in the community, you're seeing a lot more diverse kind of placemaking in general. And placemaking in general places a huge emphasis on the resident and the civic fabric, but it also places emphasis on kind of daily errands and amenities from an affordable housing perspective. I think we place a lot of emphasis on trying to provide the amenities to which are deficient in a particular area so that there's more equity in terms of being able to have access to kind of your daily needs without needing large incomes or other types of mobility and transportation to get access to them. So I think there's a precedence, but then I also think that there's unique character, characteristics in the Park District and Delta that A, afford that need in the sense that the scale provides a bit of support for some of these retail and civic amenities that we're speaking to, that answers some of the question about whether or not it's possible. I've always been one trying to make the argument that it is possible. We've moved in two years from an argument that a couple hundred units couldn't really be created in the Park District to kind of a conversation that, yes, we can do it, it's just a matter of us working together to try to put together civic partners, retail partners, work with the rest of the community to come up with a very informed and communicated plan in which everyone's invested in. And then one of the, the last points I would make is the community has very broadly communicated that they want retail amenities in the Park District. And we've documented this in all of the meetings and all of the engagements. There are different ideas about how much, which I think is, is one of your points, but I think fundamentally we get to a contextual point, which is back to the context of the problem set, is how do you address large shareholdings, providing a large volume of housing that just needs to meet basic needs of providing shelter and providing a realm of affordability, and then translate that as well into the neighborhood context as you, you kind of bloom out and then try to fundamentally provide some amenities and services that are within a walkable area that also kind of meets sustainability tenants of trying to get people out of cars, trying to keep people socially engaged in kind of their civic environment. So we're fundamentally trying to tackle a whole wide variety of problem sets, many of which York's team and others have outlined, and you, you all have participated in the Rethink Housing Action Plan. And we have put together a very large, talented team to try to address all of these problems and try to take a whole lot, broad problem set, and trying to put them in twelve-and-a-half acres the best we can. And so with all that said, I think the quick answer is yes, we can do it, but we need your support, and we need a lot of input from a lot of the community.
I really, I do think that this is such a very necessary project, and I appreciate what I'm starting to see described in this massing site study. Some, some really interesting level of detail happening. I would like to see this translated into a massing study in three dimensions. I'd like to see it in the context of the neighborhood for future presentations. I love the description of some of the amenities that are proposed. I think that that's really exciting. I also wonder to the extent that it's realistic. In my experience, projects that succeed in the end result of, of being very vibrant and having a lot of interesting complexity also have significantly larger budgets than I think the Baker Heights project benefited from having. So I wonder, you know, how much of that is really going to be translated into the end result? I want to see this become a very vibrant and, and beautiful asset to this neighborhood because it is needed, it's so necessary. But I'm also really motivated to see some numbers and some data, too, because the images are great, and, and it, it does sound lovely, but, but I would like to see a little bit more, a little bit more meat behind it.
Commissioner Chatters?
Thank you. Every time I drive past this property, I think about our housing needs in the city and the fact that it is just sitting there. So I am so happy to hear that we are moving things forward on that. Also, thank you to Ben Young, Community Leader Ben Young, for all his years of service. He will be retiring, congratulations on that. Mr. Young, you will be missed. Mr. Young, you will be missed. I, I wanted to just, just read a quote that jumped out at me from the materials that you provided. It said, "We need to consider adding some commercial space and opportunities for small businesses. This area is a food desert, and more opportunities for growth in community is critically important for safety and economic success." And that was from some of the outreach that was done leading up to this point in the project. And I thought that was a really important sentiment. So thank you for including that as far as some of the comments from the community. I, like Commissioner McGinn, am anxiously awaiting information on the ownership opportunities because I did not see that in the materials that we were provided. So I would love more information about what types of options are going to be available to the community. I had a question, a couple of questions. One, when I was looking at the timeline, it looks like 2022, it has the townhouse units. And so that's that, on the map here that we, we've been given, the small one, it says Phase 1, although on the timeline it's referred to as Phase 2. But it's in the year 2022. So I, I guess I was trying to clarify, is that in process at, at this time since we're nearing the end of 2022? Or is that just the permitting for those townhouses that, that's occurring?
At the conceptual stage that that was done, which was quite some time ago, there was some thinking that we might approach kind of the townhome section, which is currently issued across here. There was a discussion about moving forward potentially with the town, townhome concept. I think right now that that's stalled because of the complexity of the entirety of the site and trying to think about delivering one side of the site with the other side unfinished and the complexity of trying to run through the phasing as well as the addition of a very large consultant team running through a lot of issues. So right now, that's just going to be delivered with the rest of the project. That phase is to be turned later in the future.
Okay. Thank you. My other question was regarding parking. It looked like, based on some of the materials, that the parking requirements are going to be met by stacking the units or the, whatever is constructed for mixed use or, or housing on top of parking. Is that, is, am I interpreting those drawings accurately?
We will be approaching, parking's a huge subject. We have not really studied parking to any degree of depth. And so we will be coming back to the Planning Commission at a later date with a much more sophisticated view of planning. I think the one thing I can say is that the Planning Commission should expect a wide variety of parking provision, whether it's subterranean, whether it's above-grade, a wide variety of solution types to just kind of parking requirements and satisfy both regulatory compliance as well as community needs.
Okay. So parking to be continued.
To be discussed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And thank you so much for this presentation. I am, I'm very excited for the community as far as the possibilities that this presents. Thank you.
Commissioner Atkins.
I have a few questions. First, regarding just the history of Baker Heights, is there going to be any attempt at like maintaining one of the old structures or anything along those lines in this project to just keep that historical link or some other way to just commemorate the origins of the Baker Heights project?
At the present time, there isn't any intent to retain any of the individual structures. There's a wide variety of vandalism and some other things that we need to deal with regarding existing structure that complicate some of those particular use types. We have not quite got to a stage in which we're able to kind of conceptualize both art culture and also historical remembrance and other, other types of movements to put them within the Park District, but we certainly will think about that comment and come back to you later with some wider comments about what might be possible.
And then my other question, in the materials that were handed out beforehand, there's mention of indigenous culture. And in this, it mentions that one possibility would be to pursue partnerships with tribal groups as development progresses. And I'm wondering why not pursue those partnerships right now? And in addition, it sounds like those partnerships are intended, at least according to this handout, quote unquote, "These partnerships can help new development to be more inclusive, educational, and engage a wider system of values." And I'm, I'm wondering why not try to engage with our local tribal nations, not just on a cultural and educational basis, but also on the basis of just trying to figure out how we can provide more housing for Native Americans in our region. Unlike Seattle, where they have the Chief Seattle Club and other urban Indian groups that really support urban Indians and Native Americans are the group that's, has both the lowest homeownership rates and the highest rates of homelessness. And so there, there is definitely a need for some kind of partnership along those lines with tribal nations. And I'm just wondering why that doesn't look like it's being pursued right now?
We do, in a variety of ways, consult, especially on environmental and other kind of regulatory compliance, but we do also take your point that we probably to date have not fully engaged regarding the issues that you mentioned. I don't have any further response really than it's a great point and it's something that we will try to be better at.
Thank you. And that's the end of my, my questions.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? I have a few. Help me understand the 1,500-unit goal. You're, you're currently at 244 units. You're adding back 105 currently. I'm assuming the 1,500 is on top of the 105 that are currently under construction?
Correct.
So how did you come up with the 1,500-unit goal?
One, we started conceptually from our strategic plan, 10-year strategic plan, which kind of guides a lot of both mission as well as other strategic objectives for the Housing Authority. That's basically guided by the board. So from a fundamental perspective, we started from trying to assess how much of the 1,500 we could allocate to our lands as well as to other land holdings that could be acquired in the market. Once we started looking deeper at the property at Park District, we basically made an assessment on what was kind of existing land use and then also what would be possible. And when we asked questions during GGO's phase of running the master plan of what was possible in terms of a vibrant environment that provided a variety of uses that would meet the public's needs, we basically came up with 1,500 units as kind of a maximum target level of scale in terms of housing provision. You know, to a certain degree, it's an abstract number. To another degree, we think having gone through a large-scale master plan exercise with substantive kind of community engagement, we've reached a kind of a target point that will be assessed from an architectural urban planning concept, but also provides a certain certainty to the provision of a substantial scale of housing that's needed in the community.
So did you, was there a, a point in the discussion where you were talking about 3,000 units and you landed at 1,500? Or have you been at 1,500 and backed into it? It just strikes me as a significant increase. And there's a, there's some discussion in the materials about neighborhood context. And we're talking about a, a 12-story building in an area that has largely one- and two-story buildings surrounding it. So it does, I mean, I, I, I don't disagree, or I should say, I wholeheartedly agree that this kind of project is needed. I keep coming back to the question, why here? I think that if this were being proposed downtown, I think it would be the tallest multifamily building or buildings in the downtown area. And I think it would be celebrated. I look at this now in this area and scratch my head as to how this makes any financial sense when private developers looking at market-rate housing can't really get above seven or eight stories.
I think there's several answers to that, at least, you know, that reflect kind of our thinking about it. One of them is, is these are the land, land holdings that we own. This is the property we have to develop. This is the property we have to basically provide needed services to the community, whether they're in the form of shelter, whether they're formed in housing affordability that kind of meets their income levels, or whether it's in the wide kind of fabric of civic and retail and other services that can be provided kind of in a large-scale project like this that the market developers and other references generally can't provide. And so there are certain things that we're able to do as a housing authority that others can't do. And this certainly replicates something that we can do. We have an internal development team that has a similar capacity to many large developers. We have a very experienced kind of staff across the Housing Authority. We have a wide range of resources in the consultancy fields. And we feel that whether it's on a financial basis or on an urban planning basis, architectural basis, or social services basis, we can deliver a project of this scale that meets a wide variety of community needs. We simply don't have 12 and a half acres in downtown Everett that anyone has offered for us to develop.
Have you sought a land swap or approached anybody about an assemblage?
I have never seen 12 acres anywhere in downtown vicinity.
Well, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure, you know, 1,500 units requires 12 acres. I guess the way I'm thinking about this is, might you get more lift from an equity standpoint? And might there be more vibrancy and economic upper mobility if it were in a more urban setting where the distinction between subsidized housing and market-rate housing wasn't as obvious?
Could you walk me through your interpretation of subsidized housing and non-subsidized housing, just so I make sure we're on the same page?
I, and this is a personal opinion, but I, I look at this project and the forms of the buildings are unlike the forms of the market-rate housing buildings that I see downtown.
You mean in terms of size?
In terms of size, in terms of design. They're just, they appear different to me. And I think in part, maybe because of them being in a, in a, an urban area that is largely residential and lower scale. So it stands out to me. That's all.
Yeah. And, and I take that point. And in essence, I would agree. I think, you know, if we go back to the plan development overlay process, large-scale land holdings, we end up with a unique environment that asks contextually for unique responses to that particular environment. And we responded to it in that way. I think one way to look at the Park District and to look at the Delta Neighborhood Community is to look around the community to see what's there, see the public housing that exists today, and suggest that the replication of that housing or something similar scale is the answer for the future. I think our response has been to try to be very forward-looking, not only about this decade, but also decades to come, to try to respond to a massive need to provide affordable housing and housing in general now, not in years to come. We have existing land holdings which we can execute. We have worked very hard to provide buffers to basically enable that scale in a way that it doesn't provide a lot of impacts on a neighboring community. At the same part, we're trying to solve the problem of how do you provide retail and civic partnerships in Delta, which has traditionally not had those without providing the density, both the density to feed the retail, but also the density to provide foot flow to a lot of the civic partners who need that kind of foot flow and that kind of social engagement to take place. Fundamentally, we're also just talking about social engagement and how do you create social engagement and community building? And our argument would be, Park District is very well-placed to do that. We have talked to at length about the variety of public and civic amenities that are nearby. We already have Baker View, which is about eight stories in scale as a precedent scale type, not very far away from it. We also have Providence Regional, which is another very similar kind of 10-story, nine-story scale type, both of very significance, which hasn't negatively impacted that particular community. So I suppose our argument would be, it absolutely is unique. It absolutely doesn't have a lot of precedent in Everett. But we're also trying to be very forward-thinking in addressing the needs in the future from, from our perspective as a housing authority. And at the moment, we're doing our best to try to meet a wide variety of concerns, but also fundamentally deliver the housing that is lacking at the moment.
Aside from the, the number of units that you could build under the proposed plan development overlay, are there other things that you couldn't deliver on, under the existing zoning?
Could you repeat that question for me? I think I caught the civic part.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering, is the public development overlay, is, is the purpose for that really to afford you the ability to deliver the additional 700 to 800 units? Or are there other key components that the public development overlay provides you?
I think we could speak to many of these things through the flexibility provided in the, in the overlay. And certainly this is an ongoing conversation in which we're all educating ourselves about exactly what the overlay affords and what it doesn't afford, and what are the opportunities, and where are the areas in which we need to work on remodeling our thinking, both to meet the aspirations of the community as well as our own. And so I'd say a few things are very clear. One, some of the retail and kind of civic-type uses would not be possible with the existing zoning as I understand it, and I certainly leave it to York to correct me if I'm wrong. But I think that's very accurate. I think secondly, a lot of the public space that would be provided in this plan would be far in excess of what would be provided in a lower-density zoning. You'd end up with a much squatter, kind of wider, broader housing envelope that wouldn't provide a lot of the public civics features that you would feel at grade in terms of experience as, as someone appreciating, living through that experience at grade. So those two things, parks and that space, and then I think the thing that's always missing sometimes in these conversations is social engagement. How are you going to community build in a particular place? And how do you solve that problem set? And our way of solving that problem set is to supply housing that people need, to provide them the civic and social and retail and other amenities that they need and do so in a way that's very sensitive to the neighborhood fabric and do it in a way that's sensitive to kind of the density and the scale and the height of those particular structures and that particular civic fabric.
Okay. I think that, thank you. Thank you. I think that when we, when we visit again next time, it would be helpful, I think, for us to understand the benefit, the specific benefits that the public development overlay affords you that you don't have under the current zoning. I think that would be good for the Planning Commission to understand.
Absolutely.
I also heard tonight that there's a, a strong interest amongst a number of commissioners, myself included, about opportunities for homeownership. And so I think additional detail on that would be great as well.
Certainly.
Yes. And finally, and again, I, I agree with a number of the comments, the public comments that were received in your process. I agree with Commissioner Chatters about this area and many areas of Everett being food deserts, and that's very important. I struggle with the 45,000 square feet of, of commercial space. I'm not sure that we have 45,000 square feet of retail space that we can keep full in downtown Everett. And so I think about the viability of that. And if a project like this doesn't do well, what does that mean? And so I, I guess, I would love to understand how it all fits together next time.
Absolutely. We look forward to the presentation.
Please.
I keep coming back to the, the commercial space. I echo the comments that Commissioner Finch just made. Does Everett Housing Authority currently have or manage any non-residential properties?
We have non-residential properties, but we do not manage retail or other type.
So this would, so taking on some of this would be a brand-new type of thing fundamentally in some ways for Everett Housing Authority then?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah. And I guess I just would echo those comments and, and would say maybe for, I, I don't know how reflective my views are of the general population, but for what it's worth and maybe with the consulting team here, for things that maybe would be questions to answer in the future. When I see a project like this, what's being proposed here, I, really exciting, sounds really amazing, would meet so many potential needs. I gotta admit, I'm a little skeptical that it can get pulled off. And I don't know why, but it just seems so, whatever the team can do to put some things together to maybe, and I guess what I'm coming back to is partly the scale for the area in, of, of town, kind of what Commissioner Finch said. I'm concerned about the viability of, I, I can see why people would say, if you're doing this, let's have some, we need some retail, we need some civic space, we need, we need this stuff. I'm concerned particularly for that part of, of the, of the city, how feasible that really is to really do that well with retailers that people would, or, or restaurants or types of facilities that people would really want to go to and use that. So I, they said that's where I'm a little skeptical. And frankly, I don't know enough about, I don't know much at all. I'm woefully... I'm woefully uninformed about what EHA even does and, and how exactly they operate. I, I should probably know more, but it might be helpful to share some more information, generally about, like, who, who, what the population being served, questions about the income mix, I, I'd like to more, some more detail about that. And, and exactly how, how would someone, how does somebody, would, how would someone get connected to being able to live here at some point? I've kind of what the process is, and who exactly, you know, how does that happen? Who are, who exactly are we, are we, is being targeted and being, would benefit direct, most directly as potentially a resident here? That would be helpful information for me.
Adam, you're not alone. I, I, I am completely with you, 100%. I think that we would all have a better understanding of the project if we had a better understanding of the Everett Housing Authority as well. I think that that would give us a, a firmer grasp of what we were actually looking at if we knew who was proposing this project in the first place.
We can't wait to give you that presentation.
Good, this seems, this seems awesome.
I've thought all night.
I, I hope, I hope this can happen, I hope this succeeds, and I, anything we can do to make that happen, but still more questions.
We all have doubts. There's a lot of problem sets to solve, and we're just working day by day.
One final comment from me on a more positive note. When we were, when I was chairing the Rethink Housing Committee process, like, this kind of big innovative project is precisely what we need in order to get that 22,000 unit gap just mitigated. And just, I am amazed that you guys are, are planning this, I'm amazed that you're proposing this, and just, I, I, big kudos on all of you for just really thinking outside of the, outside of the box and thinking about, how can we, because this looks like you guys went in and said, how can we make the biggest project that can make the most impact to address our housing crisis? And this is just absolutely astounding, and I just want to thank you for just proposing this.
Appreciate the comments, thank you.
Um, York, I had one more question in terms of the, like, the overall fabric around this site. I know in the past, we've heard a lot of public comment about sidewalks and bike paths that were not continuous, and we've really struggled in the past to address these different projects, because I know it often happens in a very piecemeal way throughout the city in terms of what we have the budget for and what is adjacent to a different project, you know? Understandable, but I think in this neighborhood in particular, we are struggling with a lack of general connectivity. I, I love hearing about proposed bus routes and stronger, you know, better availability to bus routes, but I think one thing that is a little bit jarring when we look at this project is if anyone has an understanding of the area generally, you know, that it is difficult to access the neighborhood, get out of that neighborhood on bike or on foot. And if you have, you know, best case scenario, this project is truly vibrant, really spectacular, and people want to access it from elsewhere in the city, do we have any adjacent projects that would dovetail in with this? Can we think about how our bike paths are being addressed in the vicinity and how our sidewalks are being addressed? And can we create a little bit more, a few more threads to the rest of the city? I think that that would sell this a little stronger.
Yes, you may have seen me nodding regularly throughout your comments. I thank you for bringing that up. That's a really important aspect, I think, of this development. It's important to the neighborhood. I visited the Delta Neighborhood Association meeting, I don't know, nine months ago or something. We talked a little bit about Baker Heights, we talked a lot about sidewalks, bike lanes, streetlights, the kind of basic civic amenities that, that there's a lot of concern in the neighborhood about, about those lacking in some areas. One of, one of my messages then is that it is really hard, we're a large city, we can do like a couple quarter miles of sidewalk a year, there's a prioritization process, a transportation committee that helps, that helps prioritize those, those limited dollars, and there's a lot of needs, and it's really hard to get, and I could see a long time passing before we're able to close the gap in all these areas of the cities. Development is a way, you know, of development creates challenges, and it could be congestion, it can be change, it can be new and different views and all of that, but it is also a vehicle for neighborhood uplift in terms of infrastructure. And through the PDO, Plan Development Overlay and the Development Agreement process, as I said, it's kind of a blank slate, and it is going to be a bit of a negotiation with the project team and the city, with the interests of the city as a whole and the neighborhood top of mind for us on the city side. Once it gets to you, you'll, you'll need to, along with council, essentially ratify that. But mitigation is going to be a piece of this deal, and I think that the, to Commissioner Adkins's point, the housing is a public benefit, and that is something that we do need at all price points. But we're going to need to pay attention to knitting this into the fabric of the community. And just given the comments that I've heard already around these, these concerns about sidewalk, and obviously you're going to be adding with, if it is 1,500 units times a couple of people per unit, that's a lot of new transportation demand. And typically with new transportation demand, you have a need to accommodate that throughout all of the modes, and there's going to be more people walking on this street or that street headed up to Broadway to access the new Bus Rapid Transit line that's coming, and hopefully, don't want to get ahead of ST3, but someday that, there are studies to extend the light rail, and that would be a logical area around that college hospital residential cluster up there. So mitigation through the Development Agreement and the PDO process is going to be the vehicle to look closely at those off-site transportation improvements focused on the, on the bike and sidewalk. And then the comprehensive plan update process. So a lot of these broader issues that go beyond this development, I think it's, it's going to be challenging capacity wise to be looking at this small scale relative to the city development, while at the same time, we're imagining the future of the entire city of Everett. But there's a lot to like about that too, because we'll have a chance to, in parallel, be thinking about these bigger issues. We'll be looking at our transportation element, we'll be looking at our capital improvement plan, we'll be looking at the future networks and our concurrency standards, which, which connect the land use and growth to the transportation facilities. And we'll be able to, in, in parallel, engage with the community. We're going to have an outreach and public participation program focused on the broader comprehensive plan, but you're not going to avoid talking about Baker Heights in, when we go to that neighborhood. So I think there's a lot to like about that.
Your-
A question on the, in the developer agreement, is there a place where there's actually like a business plan review? Is that part of the approval process? I'm just wondering if we would see something like that as part of our review? I was thinking about how, by business plan, you mean the finances behind it and that sort of thing?
Yeah, at some point, again, trying to get rid of the magic that's going to make it happen, and so we could understand that better.
Yeah. I mean, I think overall, we're at the very, very early stages of the process. I really appreciate, I think this is a great discussion, and this is exactly what we wanted to hear. It's a little bit unfulfilled so far, because we're still working on it, and there's a lot that, that needs to be developed still, but these questions and these priorities that we're hearing now is going to feed into the front end of this planning process rather than coming back to it later. So that's why we wanted to make sure to get in front of you relatively early in this process. Now, that's challenging, because there are so many questions that we don't have answers to, but on the other hand, we can hear about that. The question about orientation to the Housing Authority's mission and their, and their process probably speaks to the business plan there, because that's what, that's going to be wrapped up in. I don't know if you have a strategic planning process coming soon? Would that be a vehicle to come back in? Or are we in the middle of a strategic plan cycle? Recently adopted, okay. Well, we'll find another time to maybe use that strategic plan, because that's what's driving at least a portion of this, to peek a little bit behind the curtain of the Housing Authority's mission and strategies.
Just one last quick comment. Just understanding that community connectivity leads to safer neighborhoods. I, I just want to say, I really appreciate the, the vision in this project, that that was, it appears to be part of the consideration. And am I remembering correctly that there is a community garden being planned as part of the, the public space? And as a gardener, I just want to say, I'm a fan of that, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, commissioners? Great, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Kathy, any public?
I do have one guest that had, joined us remotely. I don't know if they'd like to speak.
I think we also have someone who'd like to speak in person.
Okay. Would our, would our remote guest like to provide any comments?
Uh, no, this is Ishmael Mohammed. No, I have no comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. So I didn't plan comments, but I live in the Delta Neighborhood, about two and a half blocks from the development. I agree with a lot of what was said and asked, and, you know, I, I overall really support the project, you know, for housing, and Delta has a long and proud history, tradition of, of being an affordable, diverse neighborhood. Comments about commercial zoning? I just wanted to give local perspective. They're correct, it has been a very popular idea as part of the plan. We are currently a food desert, we don't have like a restaurant, a cafe, any of those types of kind of community informal gathering spaces. You know, whether you're walking with your kids to and from the park, you know, there's, there's nowhere to just stop and have a snack. There's, you know, people in the neighborhood, like Marshalese residents, they hold their Independence Day celebration every May at Jackson Park, and they've got food that they make, and, you know, they take donations, but there's nowhere to actually run a business and sell, sell food in the area. So I like the, there's a micro business component of like maybe live-work units for a lot of small businesses. There's a Ethiopian family that roasts their own coffee, they kind of dream of making a coffee shop, but, you know, they'd have to do it somewhere in a different neighborhood. Local taco vendor recently opened in South Everett, and, you know, I mean, there's just nowhere to do it locally. And I do kind of agree with the comments about, you know, are people going to, I guess, are they going to come to the area, you know, with, with new development, or are they going to stay away? There has been certainly history of people staying away. You know, if I talk to people on the other side, I, I have heard those things like, oh, I don't often go to that side. Oh, Jackson Park, oh yeah, that's, you know, I have to remind them where it is. We have successfully organized events at Wiggums Hollow and Jackson Park, both in the neighborhood, and we've attracted people actually from around the county for, we had Shakespeare in the Park two time, two different years, we had the Delta Art Experience three years, we've had National Night Out, Fourth of July events, and, yeah, they've been pretty well attended. So I think giving the community a chance to have some of that commercial space could really help with the vibrancy of the neighborhood overall. Last, maybe a last question. Oh, the sidewalks is, is a very big topic of discussion, and the shortcoming is mainly on 15th Street at both ends, east and west, either to get to East Marine Drive, where there's some commercial space like Franz Bakery Outlet, and, and then Broadway, obviously. And so you have to walk on the street, and, you know, buses are driving back and forth, and it's narrow, it's an unpainted, narrow road. So that would be an important mitigation in our mind, you know, my mind, getting those two sides with sidewalks to be able to safely walk, you know, not just have to wait for the bus, but to have the option to walk safely. Otherwise, you'd have to walk three blocks down to 12th Street. And last comment, or maybe kind of question, I didn't, I saw Wiggums Hollow was on the map, but part of that is technically not Wiggums Hollow, and it's actually owned by the Housing Authority, so not clear on if the plan is to convey that to the Parks Department in some way, or, or, or what is the future, future use of that? That's it. My name's Ryan Weber.
And your address, please?
Oh, I'm in Chestnut.
Great, thank you. Item 6B, Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Project Status.
Okay, and again, a big, a big thank you to Bob, Jason, Ashley, and the rest of the project team, and Jennifer for, Jennifer Gregerson on the city side for, for holding down the, the kind of corralling of all of this. It's been an evolving project over, over, well, a couple of years already now, and it will be for a couple more years. As I said, I think this is an opportune time to be thinking about big things in a neighborhood, because we're thinking about big things throughout the city, and we want to make sure that all of those big things work together well. So I'll just give a brief update of where we're at in our comprehensive plan update process, also a long process. You see here the big schedule. We are right at the borderline between Phase One and Phase Two, so Phase One was the scoping phase, where we ask what the update should focus on. You'll see on the bottom is kind of the list of key questions there that we're organizing our process around, and those are the questions that we're going to be essentially asking the public, if you could boil it down to one particular question that we're going to try to answer with each phase. So the first phase was on scoping, it was kind of that wide open, what should we focus on? We held a formal scoping period under the State Environmental Policy Act earlier this year. I will pause just a moment. I will not pause just a moment, I will keep going. So we are closing out that, we are closing out that, that scoping process. I, I, I keep a foot or a couple of toes at least into that Phase One before we're, we're completely into Phase Two, because we really want to do another round of engagement and outreach, and, and make really sure that we have adequately reached both members of the public and agencies and stakeholders and everybody else who has an interest in the development and the growth and the future of the city. We really want to make sure that we've captured all of those, kind of like the phase we were at with the Park District discussion today. We're at an early phase in the project, and you need to make sure we're heading in the right direction. I have some exciting news around engagement in a little bit, but suffice it to say that we'd like to do a little bit more around that before we formally launch on it. The next phase is developing the specific growth alternatives to be studied, and making sure that those are the right ones that can give us a appropriate, an appropriate spread of alternatives to, to see what the differences in performance are between them. We will do an environmental impact statement process to analyze and report out the performance of the different alternatives that we have studied, and then we will move into the development of the preferred alternative and the plan itself. So some of the work that we've been, been up to over the summer, I'll touch on each of these bullets in turn, but there's a summary of what I'll go through. We've got a couple of grants and associated contracts, we've advanced the outreach program, done some work refining, refining the alternatives and the scoping report, and- us out with technical assistance and resources. So, there are three grants that we have received from the state that are, that impact this project. The Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant, that actually is about implementation of Rethink Housing, but it feeds into the comprehensive plan as well, and that is a project to review and update our suite of incentives for market rate and affordable housing within the city, things like multifamily tax exemption, height bonuses, fee waivers, and those sorts. So, we wanted to make sure that, it's been a year since a lot of those were adopted. The housing market, the development market, is much different from then, and we want to make sure that we're getting the best public benefit bang for the housing incentive buck. We have a consultant team on board, they're hard at work. We're about to have some draft reports come out of that. They've looked at all of the possible incentives out there that would be available to a city like Everett. They've reviewed the performance of the incentives that we do have right now, and they've made at least some initial recommendations for changes and new incentives to adopt. So, we'll, once we get a full copy of that report, we will review it, and then share it with the Department of Commerce, and share it with the Planning Commission as well. There's also an outreach component, both to the public as well as to developers as part of that, and there's a racial equity and disparate impacts analysis that's going to be a part of that, too. That grant and contract wraps up in the middle of next year. Next is the middle housing grant, and so this is a work program. Again, this was a state grant administered by the Department of Commerce. The work program for this is around looking, I should have said with the Housing Action Plan Implementation, has a focus on kind of the large-scale housing, so more so the higher-density apartments, condos, and those more, it's going to be big business that puts those together. Middle housing is more of the small-scale housing, everything between a detached house and an apartment condo building, duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, small courtyard apartments. And this work program is around analyzing the feasibility of different kinds of middle housing in neighborhoods that have been so far reserved for single-family housing. There is also an outreach component of that work program. There is also a racial equity analysis component of that program, and we are allocating some of those funds. We're looking at visualization and analysis tools, so technology software is going to help us tell the story of different scenarios regarding middle housing. And between this middle housing and the periodic update grant, the periodic update is just funding the comprehensive plan update work altogether, we were able to bring on board Alberto Vasquez. Alberto here is the newest member of our planning team. Formal title is Planning and Community Engagement Coordinator. So, this was a position, if you'll remember back several meetings ago, we had a discussion on advancing social equity and engagement, and I think I said it in the meeting, and I definitely left the meeting feeling a little bit like we needed to do a little bit more work and needed to grow our capacity in that regard. And pretty much the next day, we set to work expanding that capacity, and we decided to apply a significant portion of those grant funds to hire Alberto to basically expand our capacity around engagement. He's gotten to work quickly already. First, I think, what are we, about two weeks, three weeks into the, two weeks, three weeks into the job? Alberto lives in the Delta neighborhood, so he's very interested. He's getting double duty out of this meeting. He has a vested interest in the, in the future, in the performance of the Baker Heights redevelopment, and is a wonderful addition to our team, and most importantly, I think that capacity is taking a lot of the weight off of our shoulders, not in terms of shifting a burden, but it was weighing on us that we weren't able to do the full and real outreach that we wanted to do. So, Alberto's first task is updating our public participation plan. We already had a lot of the pieces in place, but he's going to update that and refine that, and we're going to bring that back to the Planning Commission to share with you to make sure that we've got the right strategies and techniques around that engagement. And then we'll get to work on implementing that participation plan, and I think this winter will be around the right time for that next phase in the project. Are these the right alternatives? And we're going to do a series of community meetings, online website, the whole suite of methods to reach residents and businesses and other stakeholders in Everett. So, the growth alternatives, we've continued to refine these. You may remember this from the scoping period. We've got the no-action alternative that would add no new capacity to the city. A reminder on kind of the big, broad-scale numbers in terms of housing, we're looking to accommodate, or our growth target, our responsibility as a city is to accommodate about 70,000 or 80,000 new residents into the city by that 2044. This is why, again, I love all of the connections here, that Baker Heights development, I think, might have the opportunity to be a catalyst for North Everett. We do have eight, nine-story heights in some areas, mostly associated with the colleges around there, but Broadway is already planned for significant development. We haven't been seeing that development yet in that part of town. I think you can look to the housing incentives to hopefully make a little bit of a move there. I think the market will develop over time, and then we'll be looking through the comprehensive plan update on what changes we can make to the development regulations to support that vibrant and mixed-income and mixed-use North Everett neighborhood, and same for the rest of it. Broad numbers, we have capacity for 20,000 housing units now. We need to find capacity for about 10,000 more. The two action alternatives would represent different ways of accommodating the increment of 10,000 housing units of growth. The concentrated would focus on downtown Metro Everett, the arterial frontages, kind of the usual suspects of where we have a lot of the capacity right now, and it would kind of double down on that pattern. And then the dispersed would look at more of the middle housing options spread more widely throughout the city. That middle housing grant and that work program is going to feed pretty directly into that dispersed housing alternative. And then through the environmental review process, we'll see what the differences are in the performance of those alternatives. We'll see some of the trade-offs, the pluses and minuses, and then we'll move into a phase of deciding it's probably not going to be one of the alternatives that we'll choose, but a hybrid, where we take the best of the different alternatives. So, that's, we've been through all of that before, but just a recap of where we're at with the alternatives, and we've continued to put a lot of detail into what it means, arterial frontages and arterial buffers, and we've got lines on maps, and it's not done yet, but we are eager to bring you those products, I think, in the next couple of meetings here. Subareas, as a way to kind of break up the city into manageable chunks, you have paper copies of this map here. We have developed, there are 19 neighborhoods, those are the colored areas on the map. That is a lot of subareas to keep track of, that's too many. The city as a whole is pretty big for some of these things that we want to look at, and so we've proposed eight subareas that are groupings of census tracts, makes it easy to do demographic analysis, also addresses some kind of quirks of geography. If you look at the intersection of Casino Road and Evergreen Way, that's going to be the site of a light rail station, that's going to be a focus for a focal point, already is a focal point for our community, and even more so when there's an anchor of a light rail station, and probably some just significant neighborhood focus there. That is split evenly four directions with four different neighborhood groups, and so if you were to take those neighborhoods, which we're not at all looking to supplant the neighborhood groups, they have a long history and an established structure and leadership and participation that we want to encourage, but you can see with that subarea seven, that kind of addresses that issue of a neighborhood focal point being split into four, and now we can kind of think of that number seven as maybe a whole community. So, we would love your feedback. This is brand-new to you today, so not expecting that today, but if you have it, that's fine. Maybe at the next meeting or a future meeting, do these look like, and I will extend that offer for feedback to anybody who's watching in the community as well, do these seem like reasonable areas to focus on? And what we'll do with these could be an organizing framework for outreach, so maybe we have kind of a meeting focused on Area Eight, or a meeting focused on Area Four, because, again, going to 19 community meetings for each one of these phases is going to be a challenge for us, but eight community meetings for each one might make sense. So, it could be an organizing framework for outreach, and then certainly the analysis and things like mapping. So, if there are, please let us know if you think we're generally on the right track, because at some point in the next month or two, we're going to set these, and we're going to start producing data and maps based on them.
Do you have answers to why some of these neighborhoods are in specific area, or in specific zones?
The colors, or the blue line and the numbers?
I'm, my specific question is, why is South Forest Park in five rather than four? And especially with that area in Pinehurst Beverly Park and Glacier View being in four, it just seems very odd to then lump South Forest Park into five.
I don't know. I will ask the team.
Maybe the...
Yeah.
Maybe, like, road network access, so if you think of that piece of South Forest Park and how it might access more towards Evergreen than it would towards Bucklefield Boulevard, that might be part of it, but our GIS analysts would be, and so, you know, would be the more of the expert to answer, along with some, another of our long-range planners, but that might be kind of what they were thinking in that example.
Yeah, so I'll ask that question. That's a good question. Another thing I'll observe is that all of our neighborhood boundaries break on, a lot of them break on arterials, and so you're, I think from a planning perspective, it's nice to look at kind of the arterial, which is the main street, the high street for a lot of neighborhoods, and think of its neighborhoods on both sides, and so kind of turning that. I see that now most of these neighborhoods have the arterial or commercial district at their center rather than on their edge. That may have played into it.
Can you repeat for me what you said about census tracts in relation to the eight different areas, just so I could rehear that?
Yes, these are, the blue lines follow census tract boundaries, except in the south end of the city, where wish us luck trying to sort out census geography with the jiggly line of our southern boundary.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts on this?
Well, I just have maybe one really silly question, but Area One, is there any housing in Area One?
There's no housing. There are 66 parcels, I think it was. It was amazing how few parcels there were there.
Okay. No residents to date, but possibly future residents?
I don't think so. It's all industrial, high, heavy industrial.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's your comprehensive plan, so we can talk about that. No, yeah, so for public participation, no.
Actually, doesn't Area One have, like, a houseboat? I know there's, like, three recorded votes every election from that precinct.
Okay.
So...
Could be, could be. That's right. We'll get great participation, we'll go knock on that door. Any other thoughts on this, on this kind of subarea thing? I just thought this was a fun map, almost just put it in there just for fun. These are, maybe you can, maybe you can recognize some areas within the city, but these are just the buildings. They're all the same scale, and these are six areas that are within Everett, and I think it shows the diversity of kind of urban form and pattern that we have throughout the city, and so we've been working hard on accessory dwelling units, and it's a different situation. We know that alley lots are very different than non-alley lots for a lot of these things, but there's just a lot of diversity in the city, and so by breaking it up into smaller subareas, we can kind of be a little bit more careful about how we develop our development regulations and how they interact with the existing plating lots and pattern of buildings there.
I do have one quick question for you. I don't know if this is really the appropriate time to ask this question, but I'm thinking about it now, so I'm going to ask it now. Several years ago, I was hearing some discussion about housing types being integrated into existing commercial fabric in untried ways, and a few years ago, what I was hearing was shopping malls that are faltering, how we can use that space and co-opt it into housing use. I'm starting to see that happen at the Alderwood Mall now. They've incorporated some housing into regions of their mall that were just not performing. I'm wondering, because our own shopping mall is facing, you know, it's very unsteady, what kinds of hurdles we would face in looking at that as a housing solution for Everett, because the, you know, the square footage is there, how many units could we get out of a defunct Steers store, you know, the footprint of that store? Knowing that the transportation is there, the amenities are there, and the shopping itself is underperforming, but I don't know what kinds of hurdles there really are in Everett between, you know, that kind of proposal and reality.
Everett Mall currently mixed urban zoning, so it would allow residential, commercial, wide range of uses. The heights are probably seven or eight floors, so I think under even existing regulations, we could accommodate housing on the site. I think the mall owner is, that would be the number-one hurdle, is that it's private property, and so it'd be up to, that's, again, making these connections, why it's so exciting the Baker Heights redevelopment is that it's in public ownership, and so there's a lot more opportunity to kind of shape the future of it with the mall, with private property. We have to wait and see what the applications are. We can design our incentive structures in a certain way, but I think they are working on a redevelopment proposal for the mall, and I'm excited to see what it is, but I think we can expect to see some proposals for more mix of uses and housing on the, on the site. Okay, just a couple more here. The scoping report, I think I mentioned this, so we're going to wrap up that scoping process with a report, and still have a goal of going through previous planning processes that had public participation components and generated a lot of public comment. I think those comments are still valid and should still be, inform our discussions and our work here. So, you can look for a scoping report coming your way soon. And then Commerce and PSRC, among others, have been hard at work supporting the City of Everett and all the other cities and counties that are working on similar comprehensive plan updates. Puget Sound Regional Council, I think this is in collaboration with Commerce and Municipal Research Services Center, has this Passport to 2044 series of workshops, and you can see a list of the ones that are coming up over the next couple of months, all key topics. We will, on the planning staff side, we will be watching these and closely following this work, and to the extent you have availability and an interest to do so, encourage you to tune into these as well. I think the first three are taking, what's it called, not reservations, but accepting RSVPs now, and the last one will soon. Commerce is, there are some new requirements, and even if there weren't, we would be heading down this path anyways, but there's some new requirements in state law around analyzing racially disparate impacts and ensuring that our comprehensive plan is producing equitable plans and equitable outcomes, and addressing some of the systemic issues that, around racism and inequitable access to amenities and services and housing, and all of the inequitable outcomes that result from that. Commerce is, has developed draft guidance for... Commerce is, has developed draft guidance for how we go about that sensitive and important work, and they've released a draft. There's a link, when we post the PDF of these presentations, those words in blue work as a link. You can also Google it, I'm sure. So we're reviewing that draft and working with Commerce to help refine it, and we're putting it into motion already. And then the projected housing needs. House Bill 1220 changed the requirements for the housing elements by requiring more than just encouraging, which had been the case in the past, that we accommodate and plan for all economic segments within the city. They've developed a draft tool, it's being revised right now, I'm not sure in what direction, but this is a tool that, and you're not expected to see this, but trust that it's a complicated tool. And it spits out for every county in the state, because we're, well, every county that plans under the Growth Management Act is going to have to undertake this work. Two different methods, so we're going to have to sort this out between all the cities in Snohomish County. It's at a county-wide level, and we'll be working with Snohomish County tomorrow and other groups to help make sure that collectively, between all the cities and the unincorporated area, that as a county, we are addressing the needs or planning for the needs, setting the stage for successfully creating the housing for all the different income segments, as well as permanent supportive housing and emergency housing. These are some pretty big numbers. You know, we just went through the homeless shelters ordinance, that didn't make major changes to that framework, but streamlined the process a little bit, and it was always in the back of my mind that we are going to need 6,600 emergency housing shelter beds within the county over the next 20 years, and we have 800 right now. So we're going to do our best, but I think, seeing the numbers, I was really excited about this product because everything changes when you attach a number to it. You can talk all day long about accommodating housing for all income bands, but until you really look at the numbers of it and start trying to do the math on how we could accommodate that, it really changes the game. On the bottom there is kind of the proportional split, so you see this A and B, those are two different example methodologies for distributing, disaggregating the overall countywide need down to the different cities. Everett is, has a fairly healthy stock of affordable housing compared to the county as a whole, and so by one method, if you seek to improve the consistency overall throughout the county of a more equitable distribution, or an even distribution of different income bands, housing for different income bands throughout the county, we're actually oversupplied on the under 80%, and we would need to put a lot of energy into the market rate and higher-end housing. If you advance the current proportion that we have now, I think that's Everett, that's the method A, you can see what some of the percentages are there. No matter how you slice it, these are big numbers, and we're going to need every tool in the shed, and we'll follow how this tool progresses, we'll follow the conversations between the cities and the counties on how we collectively accommodate this need, and then we'll fold the result of those two pieces into our housing element work. I think that's it. I wish this was a picture from outside right now, but I think it's dark.
Any Commissioner questions? That last slide, is that available? Is that on the website, or is that available?
The picture?
No.
No.
I have one of those.
I will post the, we will post these on the Planning Commission webpage. We'll try to get all these materials, the handouts, the slides, both slide decks and memos and everything, so yeah, we'll make it available to you.
And I know you're slammed on the, I know the next meeting, we're talking about the ADUs, and they're somewhat technical. Is there any possibility we could have those just a tiny bit earlier?
Yes, yes. We shoot for...
Thank you, Commissioner Ballard.
We are working ahead. You'll notice Becky was not at the helm with this comp plan work because she is focusing 100% on the ADU stuff so that we can get it out. Believe me, that stresses me out every week, and I wish we could get it out earlier. We aim for Tuesday, I'd be comfortable with early Thursday, but yeah, the Friday/Saturday stuff is no good.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you, Yorick. Meeting adjourned.